We're going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Can we start with the attendants, please?
Okay. Chairperson Jim Sotell, Vice Chairperson Robert Momart.
Here.
Commissioner Phyllis Harden here, Bob McCool.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Lisa Ritchie.
Yep.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Woody. Attorney Hillary Graham. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
At this point in time, we normally would have a public comment to the consent agenda or any other non-agenda items, but I take it you're all here for door number five, correct? All right, so we'll dispense with the public comment. We'll go to consent agenda, which has to do with the minutes of the last meeting. Has anybody found anything they need to correct? Or, I guess Commissioner McCool?
You can put me down as an I, but I wasn't at the previous meeting, so I actually abstained from that.
Okay.
And then there was no mention in the minutes of any of the open discussion towards the end, and I know there was an assignment given to us at the end, too. Should that be in the minutes or do you not normally do that?
It was a work session.
Oh, that was part of the work session.
Yeah, so it's not part of the minutes.
Got it, okay, then that's all I got.
Okay.
Any other comments, changes, corrections as it relates to the minutes besides the one that's been mentioned? Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Commissioner McCool, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
I'm sorry. My bad. Commissioner Reese seconded it, all in favor?
Right.
In unanimous in those in attendance. All right, I'm now going to open up a public hearing as it relates to the adoption of a resolution attached to our paperwork. Mr. Williams, did you want to present initially? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Do we have proof of publication notice?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
All right, Phyllis, can you turn off the light? Stephen Williams, town planner. This application again concerns an amendment to Final Development Plan Phase One. It's a request to modify this infrastructure type of FDP as it relates to the town center. As this map illustrates, FDP One Phase One includes the roundabout, the internal roundabout within the town center at Gateway Drive, three blocks of Main Street, roughly two blocks of Superior Drive, as well as portions of Track C and Track D that surround the sports stable. This amendment relates specifically to paving and landscaping changes for the proposed area. Many of the changes are the result of the Plan Development Amendment Three that was approved by the town last year. PDA Three, as many of you will probably remember, adjusted the location of the town plaza, which was previously located on Block Six, and moved it over to Block Seven. As part of this adjustment, they also proposed tabling both the blocks of Main Street south of Block Six and south of Block Seven. The bulk of the changes proposed within this FDP involve the Main Street and Superior blocks illustrated here. The applicant's materials address these areas over three plan sheets, but staff has separated them into four general areas to reflect the kind of grouped changes that are proposed. Area One includes the roundabout around Gateway Drive, as well as the first block of Main Street. Areas Two and Three reflect the portion of Main Street that will be tabled, and Area Four reflects the two blocks of Superior Drive that are included within this FDP. In addition to these block segments, it's also important to clarify that the scope of this proposal does not include the vehicle travel lanes within either Main Street or Superior Drive. It's for the parking areas and for the pedestrian areas on either side. We'll start with a broad overview and then discuss the proposed changes and changes design and changes for each area, then conclude with staff summary of the specific conditions of approval. As related in staff's memo, two primary issues are identified related to the applicant's request. One is to substitute the previously proposed pavers within the pedestrian realm, and the second is to defer certain improvements that were included with the original FDP to a future FDP. The proposed FDP are arranged so that what's proposed is on top and the current FDP is on the bottom, moving left to right or west to east. This redesign primarily involves landscaping and paving changes within Area One. The basic geometry of the roundabout and the parking and pedestrian realms along Main Street don't change significantly. Areas Two and Three represent the table portion of Main Street. PDA Three shifted the plaza from Block Six to Block Seven. The parking area, there's a new parking area proposed on the north side of Area Two, diagonal parking. It was previously bicycle lane. This change results in a more balanced and symmetrical street design. The tabling of these blocks has also necessitated several other changes and design elements that are introduced to replace the functionality traditionally served by curbs. Similarly, rain gardens have been added to the eastern ends of each of these blocks here and here to serve as, to help with drainage that was previously directed by curbs, gutters, and culverts. Area Four reflects most of the segments within Superior Drive that's included within this FDP. This is limited to the eastern half of this block. The western half, or the eastern half, actually, excuse me, has been constructed, so this change is limited to the eastern half of the block. The other improvements have already been installed within the superior sports stable Final Development Plan. These images provide some three-dimensional context to what's involved with tabling a street. The previous design is reflected on the left and the current proposal is shown on the right. Traditional curbs, as you can see, define both the parking areas and separate the pedestrian and landscape realms from the street. The proposed change involves a lot of raised planters to serve kind of the same purpose in separating these realms, the vehicular realms, from the pedestrian realms. There's a kind of cross-section shown here. This is the cross-section, a street cross-section that was included within PDA Number Three. And then this image here kind of helps clarify how the parking element's going to be separated from the pedestrian element. So, one way to think about it is you kind of have this pedestrian zone against the building, then you have about a five-foot-wide amenity zone where you're going to have raised pavers or raised landscape beds, opportunities for dining, and then bollards, truncated domes, to separate the parking from these realms. As some of you may recall, the PDA Three amendment with design change was intended to accentuate the pedestrian realm of Main Street and eventually make the town plaza more dynamic by allowing certain blocks of Main Street to be closed off and effectively expanding the plaza area for events and festivals. Towards this end, the bollards that are proposed are removable, so it opens up the areas in between the raised landscape beds. The following slides discuss areas one through four in detail. The proposed plan on the left is on the left in this instance and the prior approval is on the right. The primary paving changes for this first block of Main Street include adjusting the scope of the plan sheets. So, you look over here, the original plan sheet kind of ended mid-block. This revised plan shows it all the way to where it connects with the next block or the next intersection. And the scope around the roundabout has changed slightly as well to include these street crossings on the north and south side of Gateway Drive and also to include the drainage culverts that are necessary on the south side. The continuous concrete pavers that were originally proposed around the roundabout have now been replaced with a detached sidewalk. That's one of the changes as well within the roundabout. And then, moving to the east, the two-toned pavers that were previously proposed are now a different finish of concrete as you go east on Main Street. The area at the back of detached sidewalks is also no longer proposed to be finished. That was previously all pavers. East of the roundabout, the planting beds have expanded slightly around the roundabout. This area has kind of gotten bigger, given more opportunity for landscaping. It's also become, all of the blocks really have become kind of more symmetrical in design and a little bit more balanced, but this is the size of the landscape bed that's proposed on the north side. It's a fairly comparable size on the south side, whereas you'll see that the balance was a little more varied in the original plan. Parking remains diagonal on this block, as do the proposed parking islands. And the only other change here is the surface parking element. This area was previously proposed to be a paver, and now this area is also proposed to be concrete. The primary landscape changes for Area One include tree grates and planter plots that, or planter pots, excuse me, that were previously proposed around the roundabout have now been, so you can see these trees. It was basically limited to trees, and then you can't see that there's a collection of a few planter pots, like circular planter pots. Now, what we have is a detached sidewalk and a whole landscape bed along every corner of the roundabout, which separates the vehicular realm from the pedestrian realm better than the original design and also affords more landscaping opportunities. So, in addition to the street trees, these new planter beds around the outside of the roundabout also feature ornamental grasses, perennials, and low creeping deciduous plants. All plants within the restricted planted area shown in the bottom-left corner here will remain less than 24 inches in height and not cause any sight distance obstructions. The central roundabout will still feature three evergreen trees. They've been reduced in size a little bit. Extending out from the evergreen trees, the design includes ornamental grasses, Mugo pines, and then further out where sightlines are in play, shorter creeping roses, grasses, and perennials are proposed. East of the roundabout, the locations of the plants have also shifted slightly, but the numbers of the species remain comparable. The overall design includes a mix of pear, maple, oak, elm, coffee, honey locust, and hackberry street trees. In general, the planter beds have been expanded and opportunities for landscaping have also grown through this redesign, particularly at street corners. Moving on to Area Two, these plan sheets clarify the paving changes between, I'm going to draw a blank on, I think it's Prominant, oh, this is Prominant and this is Marshall Road. This intersection is also where, this intersection of Marshall Road is also where the vehicular travel lanes and on-street parking areas transition to being flush with adjacent side rocks creating the table street we discussed previously. The paving design changes, or the paving design changes, excuse me, for this, for these realms of the pedestrian and parking areas include the following. The replacement of the bike lane on the north side of the street, shown here, has been replaced with diagonal parking. This update has allowed this block to become more symmetrical in design. Planter boxes and planting islands designed for the south side of the street are also now mirrored on the north side of the street. Again, concrete pavers with contrasting sandstone paving bands within the pedestrian realm are now proposed to be finished with a uniformed concrete with a sandscape finish. As discussed, removing traditional curbs and having street and sidewalk areas at the same grade requires other design elements to delineate the spaces defined by curbs. The previous design reflected a mix of flush planter beds and tree grates on each side of Main Street. This updated design eliminates the tree grate and utilizes the raised pedestrian, or the raised planter beds to provide more landscaping. Parking islands are also now rectangular in design and oriented perpendicular to the street. Rather than at a diagonal, this provides more space within these realms. So, when this Main Street becomes used for something else, like an event, this will allow for easier, like food truck parking in here and just a more open environment as well. And then the rectangular rain gardens have been incorporated at the east end of each block. Changes to the landscaping design proposed for Main Street primarily stem from the changes in the paving and the street design just explained. The location of tree streets, street trees have shifted slightly, but the overall number at 22 remains the same. As mentioned, the planting bed areas have also been redesigned and become larger, allowing for more plants within. So, previously you just had tree grates. Now, those raised planters allow for 18 additional plants, 10 ornamental grasses, and eight perennials. The parking islands and the planters are generally designed with taller ornamental grasses in the middle, low-growing roses on the street side and perennials on the sidewalk side. And the seat walls have been redesigned as well. They're basically just more angular to follow the shape of the planting beds that are proposed. This plan sheet clarifies the paving changes proposed from just west of the Main Street Prominant intersection to Superior Drive. This block of Main Street is designed in a similar fashion as what was just described for the previous block. Sidewalks are proposed to be concrete. We have raised planter beds, bollards, and truncated domes will be employed to separate the pedestrian from the diagonal parking areas, which also, this parking area features a herringbone pattern, clay paver, and four parking islands, two on each side of the street, just as the last block did. Although the visual appearance of this block will mirror the block just to the west, these pavers are actually designed to be permeable, whereas the block to the west are impermeable. This will help with drainage. In terms of landscaping, staff summary for Area Two is also reflective of the changes proposed here for Area Three. Diagonal parking still proposed on each side of the street and large planter boxes now define street corners. Area Four concerns the western half of Superior Drive, north and south of where it intersects with Main Street. Like Main Street, the segment of Superior Drive was originally designed to be finished with concrete pavers. This FDP amendment now proposes to finish this area with a poured concrete with a broom finish, similar to what is proposed for around the roundabout. This proposed finish differs from the sandscape concrete treatment that is proposed along the three blocks of Main Street just to the west. It also differs from the herringbone pattern pavers that have been built and installed along the eastern side of Superior Drive in front of the sports stable. Because concrete is now proposed, the design of the tree grates along the west side of Superior Drive is also proposed to be updated by removing the banded brick border that was previously shown. The planters at the intersections of Superior Drive have also been updated slightly at the intersection of Old Railway, and the intersection of Old Railway has also been redesigned. Street amenities, including trash recycling and benches and planter pots, have also been removed from this segment of Superior Drive to be installed at a later date. In terms of landscaping, Area Four is primarily limited to, oh, to street trees and landscape beds at the street intersections. This design has not changed significantly. The adjustments to the landscape beds will allow for a few more deciduous trubs, and one street tree has been added north of Main Street. This plan sheet clarifies the paving changes that are proposed for the area along Superior Drive just north of the, oh, I didn't flip the sheets, sorry. How long have I been talking without flipping my slides? So, this is the area of Area Four. So, the limits are, so the pavers that we just discussed, those are going to be switched out for concrete, but the general landscaping kind of remains the same. These corners, these intersections have been adjusted slightly, and it really just allows for a little bit more landscaping, particularly at this corner here and at this corner down here. So, moving on, this is the area just north of the section we just discussed, Area Four. So, this is another area of Superior Drive, and it's highlighted here in white. The applicant previously showed this area to be built about two-thirds of the way up on the north side of Superior Drive, and then for this area within Track A to be landscaped and finished as well. This is where the site of our lift station. What they're requesting through this sheet is to add a future phase line here where they stop the improvements along Superior Drive within these two realms, the pedestrian and kind of landscape realm, further to the south, and then defer these improvements along, around the lift station until the construction of the medical office building on this lot, Block 12, is finished. Overall, the landscape changes proposed for this section of Superior Drive are minimal. Staff's concerns about this proposal relate to the applicant's request to defer improvements. As explained in staff's memo, the development agreement related to these improvements is not going to be altered, and no acceptable alternative for completing the agreed-upon improvements has been proposed yet. Consequently, staff recommends that the parameters of this FDP not be altered and that the landscaping improvements currently included not be eliminated or deferred. This is kind of moving further to the east, on the other side of the sports stable. In addition to the paving and landscaping updates related to Main Street and Superior Drive, this update also involves some slight changes to Track D, the detention area that's just east of the sports stable. The applicant is proposing some minor changes for this area. As illustrated in the design on the right, landscaping was primarily limited to the perimeter of the detention area. The update shows that a few swamp white oaks have been incorporated into this area. The reason being is to create some additional separation from that retaining wall that was constructed. These trees are suitable for the wet conditions expected. Further south, the changes to the two plans down here stem primarily from FDP One Phase Two, which incorporated this area into its design when it was redesigned and a dog park was added. The alignment of the trail also changed, so you can kind of see that the trail now extends all the way out to the east side of the landscaping and to the US 36 bikeway that primarily has been constructed. Previously, that trail looped this way and was on the western side of those trees. So, tree counts in general for the area that's still included within this portion of the FDP are very comparable. And then this sheet just lists the groups, abbreviation, names, and quantities and sizes of the plants and species proposed. You can see on the right that this list used to be a lot longer. It just had a lot of plants that actually weren't incorporated into the design, so it's been cleaned up. This is the specie list that actually reflects what's being used within FDP One Phase One, and they've added the associated tables that kind of clarify how they're meeting open-spaced planning requirements and right-of-way planning requirements accordingly. Their marked-up version also clarifies how their totals have changed, and a lot of that change is due to the fact that they've omitted some of those areas that were previously included with the FDP from this proposal. The paving and site amenity changes are also clarified on their materials and site furnishing sheets illustrated here. Elements A through C are like-for-like updates. These over here were the previous designs for the bench, trash enclosure, and bike parking. Their updated plans are over here. They're very comparable, just kind of reflect a different, a little bit more modern design. As far as their tree grates grow, this is the same tree grate that was proposed originally. It's shown here. They just added another different type of tree grate, different size of tree grate, to include in their plans. It's a little bit harder to see. Elements E and F illustrate the various pedestrian and parking paving elements proposed, contrasting the original FDP to the proposed FDP. Illustrates that the proposed changes to the color scheme within the pedestrian and parking realms, the original FDP included more beige and tan colors, and the updated proposal features primarily reds and grays. The applicant has also added photos of the two concrete finishes that are proposed. Those are here and here. Paving type I is a sandscape finish proposed for the majority of Main Street. The applicant explains this to be a high-end finish that exposes the aggregates within the concrete. The updated proposal also reflects a cast-iron truncated dome down here on the bottom left, bollards shown here, and the redesigned seat wall, elements and finishes shown here. Staff has related a handful of technical corrections that need to be made to this sheet, but the primary concern and reason for a condition of approval is the introduction of the poured concrete into the pedestrian realm of the town center. So, these illustrations here kind of help clarify what was previously proposed, and this is what's actually installed in front of the sports stable as well. This herringbone patterned concrete paver was proposed to encircle and continue kind of from Main Street all the way through the roundabout. To the right of the dashed red line, two treatments were proposed, and that's kind of shown here. So, it's this kind of more square block, and this is the traditional more brick-looking pattern, herringbone pattern. And that was the element that was proposed to extend through the three blocks of Main Street to the east. This illustration kind of helps clarify where those two concrete elements are proposed. This is the traditional concrete two, like you'd see in a normal sidewalk that's proposed in this area, and then concrete one, the sandscape finish is proposed through here. The illustration on the left is also included from the design guidelines to clarify where the various paving types were intended to be employed. Type D, which is what staff believes the two lands, or the two concrete finishes would be classified under, you can see it was reserved for the roadway. The image on the left, excuse me, the image on the right is the one of the sports stable. It's a little dark, but you can see that that's the patterned, or maybe you can see that that's the the patterned herringbone finish that's in front of the sports stable. Although staff agrees with the argument that concrete pavers have greater maintenance issues than traditional concrete, alternative options exist, as illustrated by the paving options A through C in the design guidelines shown here. Each of the concrete options currently proposed would fall within paving type D, which is not a finish intended for the town center core. Paving types A through C include clay and sandstone pavers, as well as stained and stamped concrete within paving type C. Utilizing a paving, a pavement type or a combination of pavement types from the approved option is available as staff's preferred alternative. A more balanced update to what the applicant is proposing could also be achieved by simply just adding a different paving type on certain elements of their street. One suggestion could be just to add the same, this is a, I believe this is a, it's a paving pattern that offsets it from the concrete. So, this element here, which is also used around the intersection, could be employed from the planting bed all the way over to that intersection, similar here, and create just more of a, an offset to the concrete that's proposed. And the similar type of treatment could be proposed at the east end of the blocks as well. Should poured concrete be supported anywhere within the pedestrian sidewalk, staff suggests that it be stained or stamped at minimum, meeting the requirements for paving type C. In addition to swapping out pavers within the pedestrian realm for concrete, the applicant is also proposing to remove pavers that were previously proposed within the parking areas for this. So, this street actually is built in concrete, and they're proposing to finish it in concrete. Staff would be more supportive of this change within the parking area should the recommended improvements to the pedestrian realm actually occur. If the applicant's argument is, one of the applicant's arguments is that concrete is proposed to provide a different finish element to the bricks and pavers that were proposed on different blocks of Main Street. blocks of Main Street. Within this block, it's primarily concrete. It's a concrete drive, a concrete parking area, and a concrete, primarily concrete pedestrian area. The other primary issue with this proposal, reflected in staff's recommended conditions, concern the applicant's request to include notes in the FDP that would defer certain landscaping, paving, and site amenities included in the original FDP to a later date and a future FDP. These notes would entail updating the development agreement that is associated with these improvements. The development agreement cannot be updated through this FDP amendment, and the town is not interested in revisiting the terms of that agreement at this time. It was a difficult agreement to reach, as I understand it. Staff understands and appreciates the construction-related concerns the applicant faces, but as mentioned before, no solution has been proposed other than to simply omit these improvements from the FDP, which isn't supportable. Consequently, staff recommends that the parameters of this FDP not be altered, and the associated improvements remain part of the amendment. So this is staff's recommendation. We're recommending a condition approval, and that planning commission recommend the same condition approval to the town board as condition, which includes making the technical ration, technical corrections outlined in staff's memo, updating the paving finishes as explained, following the parameters of the prior FDP, and not deferring improvements. Additionally, this update has ramifications to other plan sheets within the FDP, so staff is also requiring that the remaining forty, complete forty-page FDP also be updated to reflect the changes within the sixty-day post-approval timeframe that's afforded. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Oh, and one last thing, sorry. Condition E needed to be updated. We put it on the applicant to record, to record their FDP in staff's narrative, and it got carried over to the, or staff's memo, and it got carried over to the resolution. So both the resolution and staff's memo need to be updated as kind of reflected in red at the very bottom. So the applicant shall not record, but they should prepare their revised FDP plan sheets for staff's recording.
Thank you for breaking that down for us. It was really helpful.
Thank you, Stephen.
Go ahead. I don't really have any questions at this time. I don't, nothing's come to mind yet.
You know, my, my biggest question is, and I don't know if I misunderstood this, but for the, for a few of the sections, we're removing the bike lanes to add parking for design, for design symmetry? Is that what was kind of stated?
It's not for that reason. So basically, when you get to this block of Main Street, it's no longer going to have a dedicated bike lane. When you get to the tabled portion of Main Street, the intention, and I can let the applicant kind of explain the design too, but previously we had, this was the plaza area, and instead of having parking on that side, there was just a dedicated bike lane. And the way that the PD Three kind of circulates bikes through the town center, they come up Avenue C, I think that's Prominon Drive, and then they, they route west. If they were coming east, they would actually route south on Marshall to go south. So there's no eastbound lane on the south side of the street. There's just a dedicated lane here. But because we're going to have diagonal parking, and because the street's going to be tabled, it really kind of becomes more of a common area for bicycles, like just a shared road. So there is no dedicated bike lane anymore here, but it wasn't necessarily a substitute or a, and I didn't intend to suggest the design change was to create symmetry. It's just, that's what it has resulted, is a very symmetrical kind of street design where previously you had, you know, one design for the north side of the street and then a diagonal parking design for the south. Now it's basically, you put a mirror, yeah.
Now it's cars backing out from both directions and the bike, people who might be biking down the main road.
Correct. But the intent of like a tabled street, once you kind of pull up on that, is that it slows traffic and creates a morbid, like you understand that you're entering a different type of environment, so.
Are speed limits defined?
Speed limits? I don't know that we have defined them yet. We have not certainly set out. I don't know that Bill can clarify whether or not there's any posted street limits to a street that's not being operable now. I don't think we have. But something we can discuss if you feel like a lower speed than 25 or whatever. And this is actually your kind of, you know, these are the last two blocks before you terminate it, so it could be merited to have a slower speed anyway.
And then the removable bollards?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any idea how those would be constructed? Because it's, my concern is that, you know, I don't mind, like the planter boxes or all of the planting beds that have gotten larger, replacing the tree grates, I think is a great way to, to keep cars from coming into the, into the seated area or the walking pedestrian area. But the bollards, which are supposed to protect people, do we know how those are going to be constructed that, you know, so when they do get hit by a car, eventually they will get hit by a car, they don't just, I mean, you know?
The breakaway bollards? I think they're steel bollards, but again, the applicant can kind of clarify. Yeah, I think, I believe they have a presentation as well.
I'll save my questions for afterwards.
For afterwards. Phyllis, do you have something?
Yeah. How many parking spaces are going to be on Main Street?
It is in their narrative. It's actually increasing. I think it's increasing by thirteen spaces. I want to say it's going up from sixty-some to seventy-eight, but you're going to call me out, and I'm not going to have it on me.
I think I saw that as well.
And how many are handicapped?
They would need three handicap spaces, which they've shown. So there's two on the final block of Superior Drive, or of Main Street right next to Superior Drive, and I believe there's one on the first block, but I can roll them out as well.
No. No, if it's.
So it's just under seventy-five parking spaces total, because there's one handicap space provided for every twenty-five parking spaces, and they're meeting that requirement. So it's seventy-one or something like that, and I think that they, the ones that they batted are all in this block, so we could count them up. But otherwise, the parking stays the same. I will have an answer to you before they're done with their presentation, or after they're done with their presentation.
Want to just, one other comment. There's been a lot of discussion about the multimodal transportation, electric vehicles possibly. When you're speaking to us about the parking areas and things, if you could tell me if that's been thought about or considered. I also noticed, you know, there were like some small areas that would make, look to me like they'd be great motorcycle, motorcycle parking. I don't know if it's applicable to get that in at this point, but love to hear your thoughts on that.
I'll give you this mouse here, one second. I'm going to pull it up for you.
Ready? All right. Good evening, commissioners. Bill Jenks here on behalf of RC Superior. As always, want to thank Stephen for the thorough review and report. It makes our job a lot easier, and it's been a pleasure to work with him through this amendment. So since the PD Amendment Number Three approved last year, which introduced the flush Main Street covered in clay brick pavers and moved the plaza one block east, we've been working with our civil and landscape designers to update the adjacent parking and pedestrian areas to work with what was approved in that amendment to the PD, and also to develop details which may not have been fully thought out in the first approved FDP two or three years ago. The design goals for Main Street that we've been focusing on for the last six months focus on aesthetics, safety, and longevity or maintenance. Those are the three kind of driving forces between every decision that we've made over the last six months in the, in the new design. Aesthetics focuses on symmetry, beauty, historical accuracy for the area, and really creating a Main Street that just feels right and feels authentic, like a real Main Street would feel, not like a shopping center, not like one of these kind of Disney, you know, faux downtowns, but an actual real downtown. And that's, that's a big kind of driving force between the design, and my personal design beliefs as, as an architect is kind of staying away from the imitation materials and the shopping center feel and going for this real, you know, authentic downtown. Safety focuses on interaction between the pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars, making sure that we're clearly identifying pedestrian areas, providing adequate levels of light and visibility, and also level, smooth walking surfaces, and promoting a sense of safe community through 24/7 activation. That really comes more from programming, having businesses open as long as possible, having residents there on weeknights, having office workers there on weekdays, trying to program the space with, with events and concerts and things to really keep that activity going all the time. There's a concept called Eyes on the Street that, that, you know, encourages as much activity near the street as possible, which, which has a huge effect on keeping crime down and keeping, you know, bad, bad activities down. And then longevity means not only timeless design, but also material selections, which will perform well for decades, and minimize maintenance expenses to the town. This is all, or most of it actually is, is going to be town right-of-way, so it'll be a town responsibility to maintain for the next hundred, two hundred years, and we want to make sure that we provide something that's not going to fail after five or 10 years. With that, I'll introduce Jay and Angie from our landscape design and planning firm, MIG. MIG is a thirty-five-year-old company with thirteen offices nationwide, and they're a real expert on designing these public spaces, as you'll see in Jay's presentation. And we've been very fortunate to work with them through the final design, and then they've, they've been involved obviously in the project since, since the beginning here. So, Jay?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you all for your time this evening. We're really happy to be here. As we step into this, I wanted to point out a couple of things about our firm. One, that we care a lot about this idea that Bill brought up about authenticity, making sure that something is really context-sensitive and of the place in which it is designed and constructed. And so we're actually going to start out with some project history and , and planning for you, some precedence from other places, as well as some of our own work that we have learned from, and we're bringing some of those lessons learned to you all this evening. And then Angie's actually going to contribute by going through some of the more detailed aspects of the application. So Stephen and Bill both identified, you know, the fact that, you know, there were some shifts obviously made with the previous, the PDA Three amendment last year. And so a couple of those were really important because at that time, we were looking at a kind of a fifty-thousand-foot level, thinking about the relationship of different spaces to some of the major anchors, the public spaces to the street, and what were those relationships. And over the last six-plus months, we've had the opportunity to get down to that more granular scale and think about the aesthetics, the safety, the maintenance, as well as the overall functionality, regardless of what mode you're choosing to use to kind of move through this public right-of-way. And probably more importantly, thinking about how does it work for the people who want to use the space. So these are some examples of our projects, and I'll just point out a few lessons learned from these. So the Pearl Brewery in San Antonio, a redevelopment of an old brewery, as the, the name kind of indicates there, about the creation of a public space that really begins to bleed into, you know, what we would call the private realm. We talked a lot about the pedestrian realm, you know, the through-traffic or travel space, but there's that private realm as well, which is the public businesses, or, excuse me, the private businesses, any residences that might front on the street, and, you know, creating those eyes in the street, as Bill indicated. Houston Market Square, the idea that a space can be programmable and flexible, and what does it function like when you don't have a program, say on a Saturday or on a summer weekend? Is it still a really highly functional space? And so making sure you have passive recreation opportunities, you have places for when someone grabs an ice cream cone or sandwich, they can go eat with their family, with a coworker perhaps. The Portland Waterfront Plaza was created to support an event that happens every Saturday and Sunday. It's called the Saturday Market. Some of you may have frequented it. But basically, this idea that there's flexibility in that space, and I think really importantly, thinking about the expandability as well. And so that's a key piece of some of the, the design moves and intent that Angie will walk you through in more detail, that Stephen already highlighted some of those. But this idea that, you know, what if there's three people on the street? What if there's thirty people on the street? What if there's three hundred people on the street? What does it feel like? Is it scalable? Is it expandable? And we need to think not just about the street and the public right-of-way through that, through Main Street, but also how it's interacting with the cross streets as well as the town plaza. So, street design considerations. What makes a street great? And I'll try to highlight some of these, you know, aesthetic, safety, and maintenance considerations as we step through. But I think intuitively, you know, we think about the through-travel space first. It's a street, so how are we getting through? Most of us, I think, would think by car, you know, first and foremost. So, starting at the center line, thinking about those travel lanes and how is that going to work for motorists. We brought up the bike lane in that conversion to more of a shared environment. One of the issues with any sort of, you know, sort of linear transportation movement is consistency. So the fact that there was a bike lane on a single block, regardless of, you know, what the designated bike path was, I mean, how many times do people stick to just, you know, the line on the map? So we want to think about that overall progression along Main Street and creating a consistent environment, one that did not put the cyclists at conflict with the angled parking that is along the street. And so that means a shared environment where the cyclist really can take the lane and interact with the motorists. You mentioned the speed as well, and I'm not, I honestly have no idea what the posted speed will end up being, but I know that we're designing for a speed of, you know, more in the kind of ten, fifteen mile per hour range. So again, that's comfortable for cyclists to interact with the motorists. It's vehicular cycling is kind of the term of art, as well as very safe crossings and, you know, that permeability of the space. Next, then, sort of working outward, we think about the landscape, we think about the furnishing zone, and how can that be flexible? How can it be well delineated, though, to provide that protection? And thinking about maintenance considerations of the materiality, and then ultimately, sort of the through-travel way. This is a great space, a little more difficult to navigate if you are in a wheelchair. And so that's one of the things that our firm actually prides itself in. We have a very strong ADA practice, universal design practice. So we do ADA transition planning, assessments, all these sorts of things. And so it's very important to have, this is actually, well, I think it's, looks like a very cool, vibrant place, and there's some things that we can learn from it. One of the things to not do is create, you know, a non-continuous pedestrian realm. One of the other factors that has played into some of the material decisions is, you know, the brick pavers. In a pedestrian environment, actually, sort of best practice is leaning away from that, not only because it, you know, we are looking for the aesthetics of a more contemporary and timeless blend of materials and kind of the overall look, but really importantly, there's the safety aspect and accessibility aspect of a paver versus a concrete surface. So this is back to that Pearl Brewery example. And really, the point here is how do all these places, or how do all these pieces come together? And if we think about it more comprehensively, more cohesively, we begin to think about, yes, it can function as a true through-travel way. We can have parking, but can also function for festivals, for markets, and create a space that is ultimately really supportive of the land uses. Because if we're creating a public realm and it does not support those adjacent uses, we've, you know, done the city, done the development, the community, a disservice. So really, it's about serving those adjacent land uses. This is Fillmore Plaza. Our office is actually located on this block in Cherry Creek North, down in Denver. And again, you can see, this is an example of a flush environment, delineated through a combination of bollards, raised planters, seating walls, beautiful landscaping, kind of vertical elements. And that can be converted, then. It has that flexibility where they can be closed off on both ends temporarily. This is a fashion show. You've probably been to the Cherry Creek Art Festival, use the space as well for performances. There's a wine tasting event that occurs on this street. So thinking about what are those different aspects that to integrate into that space that really provide... provide that flexibility? And really ultimately, I think the bottom line of what I've said thus far is, we want to sort of turn this inside out. Uh, think about the pedestrian first, think about how the cyclists and the motors are interacting, and think about how is this a people space? And that's not, not, not necessarily just a space for motor vehicles. Uh, one of the common things that we're seeing as sort of a best practice is that flexibility within the parking space. The trouble with that in a curbed environment is that, uh, this is a parklet example, uh, this happens to be, uh, in San Francisco. Um, here's a more local example. But with that curbed environment, what is meant to be a temporary conversion of some on-street parking spaces ultimately has to become a pretty permanent solution, uh, because we have to create that at-grade, uh, sort of level there. And so, the, uh, the curbless environment allows that flexibility to the question about motorcycle parking, electric vehicles. Uh, also, you know, creating less for, for the physical delineation of those spaces as far as the raised curbs and whatnot, provides more flexibility for striping, infrastructure for plugins, uh, different things like that that might come about, uh, later on. Uh, this is a, an example, uh, of a street that we designed in Seattle. Uh, and ultimately, what you can see here is, again, uh, with the delineation of space, uh, with a combination of planters, uh, that it really becomes a, a people space and can expand some of our, our plazas that we have adjacent to the roadway. And so, in closing, what I'll say, uh, and I'll turn it to Angie to speak to a few of the details here. Uh, when we're thinking about that, you know, the, the three key goals, uh, that Bill laid out for us, so, thinking about the aesthetics, uh, that's really what this amendment is about, uh, but it's also about safety. Um, the symmetry, I think, while, yes, it's a, it's a benefit of some of these moves, we really wanted to think about accessibility, the usability of the space, the flexibility of the space, and ultimately, supporting the businesses and providing something that is easy to maintain, uh, long-term.
Thanks, Jay. Good evening. I'm Angie Holstwess with MIG, and, um, thanks to Stephen and Jay and Bill for the great intro here. So, I'll walk you through more of the technical details of the design changes since two thousand thirteen. As Stephen pointed out, this is the project boundary, um, the, it extends from the internal roundabout all the way to Superior Drive, and then we've also got the pond area out by US thirty-six, which really hasn't changed since two thousand thirteen. Um, you'll see here, um, an artist's rendering of our intent. So, I think you probably have it by now, but this is a flush street, um, the existing two blocks of brick road are already constructed, and from, on our left here is the town plaza. Looking straight ahead is the sports stable, um, and the street, or the parking is separated from the sidewalks by, uh, a two-foot strip of detectable warning, and, um, that alternates with the six-inch curb, um, planters and then bollards that are strategically placed to be in front of, um, where cars are pulling in, and then also in front of things like light poles that we don't want the cars to run into. Uh, let's see. So, this is the internal roundabout, a block past the MacAslin Roundabout, and the previous design, um, you know, we were, we were looking at this from a mile above, and we didn't have the luxury of time that we've had now over the past six months to really go in and articulate what this, um, right-of-way area should be like. So, we've corrected the design to include a landscape buffer between the traffic lanes and the, um, pedestrian way, and we've made a eight-foot sidewalk, um, all the way around. So, you can see down here in the bottom left, there's the eight-foot sidewalk next to about a ten-foot tree lawn, and then the roundabout. So, this will keep pedestrians from crosscutting through traffic, and also people who are visually impaired from wandering onto the street, um, or toddlers or dogs. Um, as we move east, we have accented, actually, around the entire roundabout, we've accented each of the crosswalk entries with bricks. Um, this helps provide a visual cue for drivers and then also for pedestrians to know, um, they're entering a, a crosswalk. Um, let's see. Moving on, the big change to the road, as everyone has already described, are the, that we've upgraded the pavers to be clay brick pavers instead of concrete unit pavers. And previously, we only had one block of these concrete unit pavers, and even though the parking everywhere was, uh, concrete unit pavers, we only had one block of road that was actual pavers. Um, so now, we have two blocks of brick pavers, and they're going to look the same as this bottom right picture in twenty-five years or fifty years versus the concrete unit pavers under the Colorado sun fade really quickly. So, they lose their color and they turn, you know, they have a texture still, but they, they turn pretty bland pretty fast. So, we'll maintain this richness over time. The, the next main item we addressed is, um, as everyone already explained, is the, that we want to increase the flexibility. So, um, we can experiment at any time. Um, each of the parking bays is now rectilinear. So, those little triangle spaces that were taken up by, um, planters before can use, can be used for things like bicycle racks, or, as you alluded to, we were thinking about, um, the smaller smart cars in the future, or motorcycles, in really maximizing the amount of, um, usability of the parking base. And then at any time, we can close down one of those parking bays for a sidewalk sale or, um, outdoor dining, depending on who takes over the retail or the restaurant spaces around. Um, so, we are providing a flexible environment that can be changed at any time, instead of having to put a big investment into things like, um, platforms that have to be stored somewhere and built and thought about and approved, and, um, this, this design can be changed at any time. And then also, bringing the bike racks off of the sidewalks is important, cause it allows for more pedestrian movement. So, as you see sort of in the middle of this, um, slide, the bike racks are that dashed rectangle, and then there's three traditional U-racks there. And then these areas between the curb planters, which are the, um, rectangles, are, um, places that restaurants can pull out movable seating. If there's a coffee shop there, they can bring their chairs in and out, and we're really providing them a canvas to use. And then, one thing I didn't mention before is at the corners, we've done more decorative scoring, and then we still have the sandstone accents along Main Street, and then the street names are still, um, the decorative street names are still at the crosswalks. So, um, yes, we have changed the materials, and in the design guideline, we, um, as Stephen pointed out, we had identified certain areas to be certain types. But I think if we look at this street and sidewalk and parking area as one thing, we'll see that we're still complying with the design guidelines. We've just redistributed where we apply materials. So, the road stays textured and slows traffic, whereas the sidewalk stays smooth and makes it easy for, um, you know, things that maybe most of us take for granted. Um, it makes it easy for people with accessibility challenges to walk down the street, or people with wheelchairs, um, or just people who are looking around and not paying attention. They have a smooth service to walk down, and it also, um, makes it customizable by the businesses who want to fence off their little area. Um, it can transition over time. And then in the winter, we can salt the sidewalk more aggressively than we would with concrete unit pavers or colored concrete even, because those materials will degrade really fast, and we'll have to replace them. And it doesn't usually look that great when you replace, um, colored concrete or, um, the concrete unit pavers. So, this sidewalk is going to last, um, much longer, and it also, having the concrete sidewalk breaks up the whole big sea of, um, pavers all the way across. And as Jay mentioned, um, we don't want this to feel like, uh, um, theme park. Uh, we want this to feel like an authentic Main Street that's in Superior, Colorado. This is an example in the left, bottom-left here. You've probably all been here in Boulder, um, out in front of the kitchen next door. They tore out their brick a couple of years ago, leveled out the sidewalk and put in the concrete, and people love it. And they have the bikes on the sidewalk here. We've, we've pulled those off to provide a more, um, clear travel lane. And then, as I was mentioning, um, we expect that businesses will expand and contract onto the sidewalk. So, we just want to provide an easy way for them to do that. Um, finally, the seat wall design. We had more of a mountain rustic feel before, and you see that all over, um, in neighboring communities, but we decided to create a more unique design for Superior's downtown. So, in this bottom-right picture, you'll see the sandstone crosswalk entry in the bottom-left, and then the curb planter, and then the seat wall. So, it's a board-form textured concrete with a colored concrete, um, top on it, and we've straightened out all the lines and added more planting area. Um, this is just a enlargement of where those seating areas are. So, there's decorative, it's the, uh, L-shaped, they're about eight by eight-foot, um, segments, and there's one at each corner, and there's more than there were prior. Um, so, at each corner, um, it starts to feel more special. We've got scored concrete and the sandstone entry, and then the decorative street names. Um, as Stephen mentioned, we'd like to defer the installation of the landscape by the lift station. Um, here's the existing lift station, and on the left is the plan. So, there's about, about ten feet right there that we're, we'd like to, to install some landscape to screen the lifting, lift station in the future. But you see, the property line is right there, and we're breaking ground on the medical office building in a few months. So, it would be kind of a waste of funds, of the, of taxpayer money to install all that landscape and then rip it back out, um, just soon after. So, we'd like to defer the installation of that landscape for the health of the plant material as well, um, until the medical office building is constructed, and that'll make it easier for them to do their job in a quick manner as well. So, um, here's just some character imagery of, uh, the look we're going for. Um, we've, we've thoughtfully articulated the design over this past, these past six or eight months, and, um, we've thought about safety, maintenance, and aesthetics, and it's our greatest desire that we have a space that's activated, full of energy, accessible, bikeable, walkable, and customizable by the current, um, users and then people in twenty-five years. Um, the new frontier of retail is experiential, and it's our goal to provide a timeless backdrop for Superior now and for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I just wanted to quickly, uh, respond to a couple of questions that have already been asked. If that's okay, or we can, so, so, uh, real quickly, um, the, on the deferment, we're asking to defer two pieces of the originally approved FDP. One is that landscape area and the street in front of the, uh, the lift station. Like Angie explained, the medical office building's expected to start construction in the next two to three months here. If we put that landscaping in now, they're gonna be driving over it with tractors in four months, and I just hate to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a street and trees that are just gonna literally get pulled out and then put back in, in six months. Um, you know, I, I, we need to work with staff on how best to document that. I, I'm happy to, um, commit to doing it by the end of two thousand eighteen, or within six months of the MLB completing construction, or anything like that. I just, I don't want to put it in just to rip it out and put it back in again. Um, so, I'm happy to work with, with the town on whatever we need to do to, to kind of make that make sense. The other thing we're asking to defer is the, um, just some of the street amenities, uh, like the trash cans, for example. Having a trash can on the corner of the street that doesn't have any building on it and just has cars, and I mean, you know, there, there's no reason to be there, there's no reason to throw trash there, it's gonna be a maintenance issue. They're probably gonna get either vandalized or demolished, um, in the next couple of years, you know, until there's an actual building there and a business to support that. Um, so similarly, I would, I would ask that those trash cans and those amenities be deferred, maybe made a condition of, um, occupancy for the adjacent building, or any kind of other timing that makes some sense. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go in now, put a bunch of empty trash cans in, and then have it be a maintenance nightmare for the next, you know, five years. Um, also, that's the, that's it on deferments. On the, uh, electric vehicles and motorcycle parking, absolutely. Um, that's a huge consideration. I think electric vehicles are gonna be, uh, more and more the, uh, the, the mode of, of choice coming in the next, you know, ten to twenty years. Um, we have designed to, uh, be able to install electrical vehicle charging stations. They aren't part of the FDP, and they won't be installed right now for kind of the same reason. There's no businesses to support that, and we don't. Also, the, the electrical charging technology changes so much every year that we don't want to put in something now, if we really want people using them in three years. Um, but we do have conduit going in the ground to be able to support that. So, as soon as we have people to, you know, some demand, it's easy to wire them up and plug them in. Um, we have all the infrastructure going in the ground with this, with this improvement. Um, similarly, on the motorcycle parking, a lot of those little triangles that are the smaller spaces are being used right now for bicycle parking and bike racks. Obviously, those are easy to take out. Um, I think if we have any empty areas, they're obviously great motorcycle parking. Typically, they'll park there if there's a spot for them, whether it's signed or not. Um, so, but I do think that's a good idea. Uh, on the bollard design, they're steel bollards. They, they actually, they're removable, but they have a, that they're in the ground, there's, there's installed a base plate that has like a two-foot-deep section of tube, and then the bollard actually slides into that tube. So, they're designed to be hit, cars hit them all the time. If a car hits it going twenty miles an hour, it'll probably bend over a little bit and probably won't fail, which is the, the good part. I mean, they're there to protect the storefronts and the, and the pedestrians. Um, so, those are designed for that, for that use, and they will get hit, and hopefully, they don't need too much, uh, replacement. We, I've used them many times in, in a lot of different projects where we use this, this zero curb solution. And then, the last thing I wanted to point out, Stephen, could, could you bring up the PD?
Yeah.
The PD illustration again of the paving types?
Sure. This one?
Uh, no, the, the paving types illustration that had the A, B, and C, and D. It was larger, uh, near the end of your presentation.
Oh, my presentation you were?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it in ours, cause I, I liked it in yours.
This is gonna go too slow.
Yeah, there it is on nineteen.
This one?
One more. There you go. So, Stephen's absolutely correct, um, that the original PD anticipated that, you know, it has these four types of pavement, A, B, C, and D. Those kind of go in, um, in order of, uh, kind of generally in order of, of quality and also expense. Type A is the natural sandstone that we're still using at the corners, um, and type D here is actually just a standard, like a broom-finished, um, gray concrete. You can see, the original PD assumed that the streets would be made out of the, the standard lowest-quality paving, you know, on, on normal concrete or asphalt, and that's kind of the, the, the American standard, quite honestly, now. Um, you know, when you go to older towns in the US and certainly all over Europe, you actually see what we're proposing now a lot more, which is either the cobblestones or the bricks in the street, where they rumble under your tires, they make you go really slow in a car, and it feels really, really nice. And then the sidewalks are actually always concrete, because it's smoother, it lasts longer, and it's the better pedestrian surface. So, that's kind of what we're doing with this, with this amendment, is, is going back to the old way of doing things, which we've already paved the street and the, and the pavers, which is a great idea, especially, we, we, we actually switched to the clay pavers, like Angie said, because they're gonna last a lot longer, they're gonna look a lot better. They are more expensive than the original concrete pavers that were proposed, um, by quite a bit, but, but I think they're gonna last a lot longer. And so, we've actually put that in the street now, where the PD never anticipated that. And we need a contrasting material between the street and the paving, especially, um, with the zero curb condition, because you don't have a curb to, to protect this area anymore. You want, um, especially visually impaired, to be able to see a clear difference in color. And you actually see that here. There is a clear difference in color between the darker paving of the pedestrian area and the lighter paving of the street. What we've done with this design is just flipped it, and the PD never anticipated that. Um, so, you know, technically, this is sort of a, a request for an exception to that, to that PD design. So, you know, technically, this is sort of a request for an exception to that, to that PD design, but I think it's a good one. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have.
So is the plan with the poured in place concrete, you know, going back to the Boulder example, and actually in this one, to utilize where it is broom finished concrete to...
To saw cut, different, different size, so it looks like, you know, so you've got a differentiation in sizing?
Yeah, and Angie, you wanna bring up one of our plans again? That shows that, Angie talked about that a little bit. Most of the paving area that we're proposing, all of this here on the two blocks between Marshall and Superior, is actually that sandscape finish. And that's, that's actually a higher quality finish than you would ever see on, on a typical public area. That's really used for kinda Class A office and higher quality. It's what's installed in front of the daily camera redevelopment in Boulder. You know, I typically wouldn't see that for a Main Street, but because we're coming in and replacing what was pavers, we wanted to do something nicer than just the standard broom finished concrete. It has, you know, a really nice, smooth, clean surface that doesn't create the puddling and bonding and staining that the typical broom finished stuff does. This will be saw cut at all of the joints. Some of it'll be the standard four by four saw cut. There are sections on Angie's plans that actually show, sort of on the corners and at building kind of highlight points where it gets into like a two by two, probably a smaller square with a border around it. And so you're seeing that textural change in the concrete, and it's all, and it's all got that nice sandscape finish, which, which looks really good. And then we are proposing some broom finished standard concrete farther away from the plaza, where it's just, you know, more typical to have a standard concrete sidewalk, instead of the really high finish two blocks of downtown.
Remind me again where the utilities are in Main, are they in Main, or are they gonna be behind the buildings? The reason I'm asking is, the sandscape concrete, you've kinda sold me. I came in thinking I wasn't gonna like that, but I like the direction you're going and the logic behind it. But my concern on that is, if utilities are in Main and you are building everything, you know, kind of after the sidewalks are in place, are you gonna be cutting them? And then how is a patch gonna look, you know?
Yeah, sure, sure. Well, you know, luckily, especially if you keep it gray, the patching is a lot less of an issue. If you do ever need to patch because of a crack or utility, because the standard gray concrete is a lot easier to match than manufacturers...
Yeah, no, I'm with you on the color of concrete, but I'm just thinking...
And the sandscape finish is relatively, they have, it's pretty scientific. There's like levels of finish, there's one through ten, and you order a number three, and it always looks like a number three.
So you just essentially take out maybe like a whole saw cut?
Yeah, you take out a whole saw cut.
Like a whole stone and kinda come in, okay?
We are actually, most of the utilities for the buildings along Main Street are actually gonna come off the side roads here, which aren't constructed yet.
That's what I couldn't remember.
So there's some main utilities running down Main Street here, but I don't think we're planning on stubbing off of any of those for access to these buildings. Because most of these buildings are gonna be larger buildings, you know, wrap style, multifamily buildings or office buildings that'll take up most of the block, or half a block, and so they can bolster services off of the back streets that haven't been constructed yet.
Yeah, most are right here in the street, and then, I don't think we have anything on the sidewalk.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's anything under the sidewalks. Some of it's in Main Street, but we obviously wouldn't wanna rip that up and redo it either, 'cause it's, that's a hard job. But, you know, like I said, this is the mainline infrastructure, the big pipes that serve all of the feeders coming off of the parallels, or off of the perpendicular streets, and I think we'd probably pull services off of here and here.
And then, in your experience, and maybe this is more for MIG, have you guys done the stamped letters in concrete on the sidewalk before for the street names? Do shovel blades and stuff chip that over time?
Yeah, I think anything over time is gonna chip, I don't wanna lie about that. But I think the way we're detailing it, instead of inlaying bronze letters or something, will last for a long time. So it's just, I mean, you see it a lot in parks, and they plow those roads with the sandblasted designs.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's more like, like you said, like what we've done in Founder's Park maybe, rather than like inset letters, just to differentiate it maybe with like a texture change, like even like an acid wash or something, rather than, I don't know, just an idea.
And one thing to point out is that the placement of the lettering for the street names, it's behind the truncated domes.
Right.
Oh, it's right there.
I know, but even just like a sidewalk shovel, not, not like a snowplow blade.
Yeah, over, yeah, I suppose over twenty, twenty-five years. Or do you, I mean, there's, I don't know, I'm thinking of, down in Denver, there's some historic neighborhoods where the sidewalks were stamped. And I guess it would be the teens, you know, of the twentieth century. And those are still extremely valuable, so. So I think the point is good, that maybe there's some contrast that can be brought to it, but I wouldn't be too concerned about the wear and tear.
Okay.
And I, I think the idea too, along these two special blocks of Main Street, is that we don't use, you did mention the shovel, that's true, but we don't use thing, we use a rubber blade and we brush the street off.
Treat them nicely.
Yeah.
So also, in, in your experience and other design projects, around the main town square, is there anything that you guys have done where you reduced the size of the parking stalls to kind of limit the size of vehicles? 'Cause I think the size of vehicles really impacts the space. And I don't know, that, that would probably become more of an enforcement type of thing, but, you know, reducing it. So it is smaller vehicles that are parking, especially on that, you know, north side of the, of the Main Street facing the park, or facing the town plaza.
So, so actually, these parking spaces are, these parking spaces are for everybody. We, we're not saying a big truck can't park here, but it's probably not their favorite place to park. Because what we've done is we've added a little bit more space to the amenity zone by bringing the bollards on this line right here. So I think the original section had eighteen feet, and we're almost at that, but we've, we've added the bollards. So you have to stop, you're not overhanging the sidewalk as much, which will be great for pedestrians.
The one, so I cannot honestly think of an example, sort of adjacent to a plaza, where we've done like compact vehicles only, like you'd see in a parking structure. But what we have done is worked with, you know, management, or, you know, with the city or a bid, I mean, this is a district to manage those parking spaces. So sometimes, I mean, this isn't actually too dissimilar than Wincup, right in front of Union Station down in Denver now. And so they've actually, I don't know if you've noticed, but over the last, about five months ago, maybe six months ago, they converted a lot of the on-street parking to what they're calling a mobility hub. And so it's actually to serve TNCs, so that's like Uber and Lyft, electric vehicle parking. They have some on-street biking or bike corrals, you know, where there's a concentration of bike parking. So that might be an opportunity, you know, if you're seeing, maybe it's a management issue. You know, if you're seeing larger vehicles and it's, you know, sort of degrading that experience of the plaza, there may be an opportunity to kind of be more holistic in the approach to transportation and making a mobility hub there.
And one other thing I wanted to mention is, I know that we're striping the parking as diagonal, because we wanted to give people some kind of guidance at the beginning, but it's striped with a paver. So at any time, you can go out there, have someone pull up, pop up those pavers, and change the striping. So, over time, if, if that's an issue, we can make these spaces smaller. Or say that no one's using the whole, all of the parking. We can close off this whole bay of parking and make it for bikes, or dining, or whatever it might be, food carts.
So, I really like the idea, and I like the design a lot. I also like a lot of the materials that you've chosen here. But my, my question is, how does it all fit with the design guidelines that we have in our PD? That was the thing that I kept coming back to, is we're using materials in places that we shouldn't be using materials, it looks like. And we're putting other, better materials in places where we'd like to have good materials, but we're not using those good materials there. So, does this all fit? And I don't know if this is for you, Steven, or if it's for Mr. J.
So, I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to start by responding. I guess I begin by clarifying that, you know, what we have to go off of as far as their application for... I don't have a mouse anymore. But it's basically a photo of concrete that looks not that different than traditional concrete. So without a actual material sample or some better photos, we have like a two by two concrete photo that shows what they're proposing, which is hard to comment on. But, so that's basically this.
If you go back to that very end of our presentation, there's the photos of those, like larger photos of the spaces.
Okay, yeah, either way, that, this is the application submitted. So we don't have, we haven't had anything to comment on until a little bit better explanation tonight. And I don't know if we have, which images are you talking about?
So go to the very end, the last few slides.
How many slides you guys have? This?
Yeah, I guess, go look at the first one, well, actually, go to the last one first, go to seventy-first. So this is, and this is just to kinda point out the differences in concrete installations and that kinda thing. This is your standard broom finished concrete, and this is what happens to it typically after a couple of years, which the broom finish starts wearing off. It has this kind of blotchy experience, and it's not terrible, it's a, it's a sidewalk. And it's not, you know, it's not cracking. You can sell, you can tell that this is relatively new, though. And that's what happens to the broom finished concrete. What we're proposing is actually on sixty-eight there, which is a standard gray concrete, no, no fake colorants or anything. But it has this really fine texture on it, and it'll stay like that for years and years to come. This is what concrete looks like after a hundred years, if you let it wear down. This is just installing that, that, you know, sort of patina'd look from the start, so you don't have to go through that awkward blemishing phase. And this is also what's showing the saw cut joints, which, which are a lot, you know, cleaner and provide a little bit, you know, A, it's less of a tripping hazard, and B, it looks a little bit more contemporary. Number sixty-nine is, is an option. You know, if, if, if the town wanted to make this a condition, this is a, this is a colored concrete with the sandscape finish and the saw cut joints. So same kind of material as sixty-eight, it's just got that, that brown color in it. You know, I, I don't have a really super strong opinion one way or the other. Technically, I like to use the gray because it's easier to match if you ever do need to pull it out, and you don't have that kind of, this is brown, and this is a little bit different brown, this is a little bit different brown when you start patching it, which happens with this. But, you know, like I said, I'm open to suggestions on that.
I think Steven's right, though, I think when, when this goes in front of the board, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have those textures, you know, even if it's just like a eighteen inch by eighteen inch slab that you can bring out and pass around and look at. I think that would be very valuable in selling the, you know, especially like your number sixty-eight. And my thought is that sixty-nine, to go into the colored, all you're doing is it's getting a little more matched to all of your paved stones already. I think that the straight up concrete coloring, the gray, is more modern and really sets itself apart. And I think that's, and a lot of the presentations or some of the stuff you've shown from other locations, it really sets it off and, and makes it look better than what you would expect concrete to look like, so.
I guess towards that end, I would also suggest that this not be included anywhere in the town center. In all honesty, if you're gonna go to a concrete finish, I would do it everywhere. And, you know, maybe even, I mean, I don't know, the tinting, I'm not necessarily a fan of. That's how the design guideline reads, is basically it has to be tinted and stamped or scored, I guess. And the scoring you guys are doing, you could also create more of a pattern with the scoring, if that's what the, but, I mean, you can do anything with concrete, essentially. And you could get it to be somewhat closer to what was proposed. It could be, you know, scored at a greater frequency or whatever, but I don't... This is a much better illustration than what we had to work with, and that's, you know, part of... So I don't know that, I mean, I don't think paving type C is that high of a bar to hit. I just don't know that the photo that you guys had given us reflected that you hit it yet, so.
And so to answer your original question, this doesn't precisely fit into the PD design guidelines, because the PD design guidelines anticipated having number seventy, typical concrete in the whole street, and then having upgraded pavers just on the sidewalks. And, and we flipped that. So, so we're asking for, you know, I, I think it's an exception that the town board and the town can approve as part of the ten percent variance type of thing. We don't have to do a PD amendment or any of that kinda, kinda stuff. But, but, you know, I think it's actually a much more successful design, having more of the nice material in the street, again, where it's gonna slow down cars, you're gonna feel it rumbling under your tires, and have the, the clean upgraded concrete in the pedestrian areas. And, you know, i- if we have to put, this is quite a bit more expensive than standard concrete. If we have to put this everywhere, instead of doing the, the broom finished concrete along blocks five and...
Superior Drive and around the roundabout, yeah.
On the, you know, on the, on the other pieces down on Main Street, you know, I'll do it. Typically, you know, typically in a downtown scenario, all the sidewalks are gonna be standard broom finished concrete. And so I think we're, we're already setting the bar pretty high by doing the two really high level finish blocks as the sandscape. This is a standard broom finished in Boulder.
So I do agree with you. I also agree with staff, though, that brushed concrete really doesn't fit into our vision of what that was going to look like. And I just, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we kinda all understood what the was, what that was, and what the difference was, so that we could make an educated decision there.
And Steven, can you go back to the...
Nope, not anymore.
Oh, sorry.
We should have two of these things, yeah.
The products were, had A, B, C, and D.
This one?
Yeah.
And they're described on this slide, but, I mean, really, the way that that reads is how I said it, as far as, a group includes tinted poured in place concrete with decorative scoring or a stamped pattern. That's, they're kinda tiered, so this is the higher end, and then the second higher end, and then paving type C is just a, you know, stained or tinted concrete, and then this is traditional concrete, so. But I don't think, I think that they're, I mean, to Bill's point, and I think to Commissioner Stewart's question, we could approve something that's, we find to be comparable with paving type C that doesn't necessarily have a tent, as long as it is of a similar quality and meets the same intent of those design guidelines. The only other thing I'd say is that, I don't know that, you know, we were ever asked, you know, do we want pavers in the street or pavers on the sidewalk? It was just, they designed it to be pavers in the street as they went through their PDA amendment, and I think it's a great change. It's just, you know, we had a ton of pavers within, so there's two kinda standards you had to meet or be able to address for the town board, is that you have a precedent you set with the design guidelines, and you had a precedent that you set with FDP one phase, you know, one, the first one, where we had pavers kinda everywhere. So, we need to ensure that that, that same standard is met, and that's my responsibility as well, so.
And number, and C, that, the far right one, that is, it's just a gray, but it has stamping in it.
That just has some leaves in it, yeah, that one.
We'll put leaf stamps in it if you want.
He's committed on record.
Or street, or street names. Yeah, or the street names, right?
Honestly, I was around when these design guidelines were made, and I think the intent is, you know, nicest, less nice, a little less nice, and then standard. You know, not that it's not nice, but, these are four representative photos of what type C might be. So, I think if we did more scoring, like you said, that, that could also look just as nice as some stained concrete, over time especially.
I just have to go on record, I used to work for an architectural precast firm for five years, so I came from that background prior, a long time ago. Please do not put precast bench caps on these properties. They are, again, they'll chip, they'll spall, you can't match color concrete, don't do it. I liked one of the photos of, I'm okay actually with the board formed concrete capped with, I like the wood photos you guys had in one of those representative ones, with just, you know, the, the planks of wood, I thought that was nice. Or go back to, you know, solid actual stone, if it chips, it's still stone. That's my own opinion on that. But, do not like those precast benches. And then I'm wondering too, as far as benches, it looks like we've reduced the amount of bench seating overall in this plan, is that, and I was, I didn't like count, you know...
The, the number of benches has actually decreased, and I don't have the number, Angie probably does, but the actual linear footage, so the amount of seating available has increased, so.
It has increased?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
I, I think Lisa, what you're talking about is the steel benches, or are you talking about the...
Talking about the seat walls?
Yeah, the seat walls, we, we blessed those. We actually have more, more linear footage, yeah.
Okay.
And then the, as for the...
And then the, as for the steel benches, I didn't calculate, but we were also factoring in a lot of places for mobile seating.
Okay.
The only, I guess, other comment about seating I would add in while I have the opportunity is that the, the certain of the public amenities, and I think this is clear in my staff recommendation, but I didn't really address it in the presentation tonight, is that, you know, at least two blocks of Main Street and on Superior Drive is gonna be parked at capacity as soon as it's built for the sports stable. And that's a public realm that people are gonna be walking to, maybe sitting in, definitely throwing trash away, and those amenities, staff feels, have to be put in now. It's not for an adjacent block to, to put in at some later date. So, I wanted to be clear about the need for the bicycle parking the same way. People are coming to this area of downtown and visiting the sports table at a fairly decent clip already. And we don't necessarily, and those are public amenities, not, this isn't a private amenity to put on another developer of an additional block later in, in the future, so.
And those are subject to the development agreement that's already approved, right, which the planning commission doesn't really have...
Much saying, but that's, yeah, I mean, you can certainly comment on it, as whether or not you feel it's a reasonable request or, you know, proposed.
I think they made a decent document on the landscaping adjacent to the lift station, that I don't have a good sense of where, you know, the impact of construction is. But I agree with you on the, the trash cans and the benches on Main Street.
Yeah, and that's the direction, that's fine. I think that, so the development agreement, and we can talk about this with the lawyers, but, development agreement just requires that the improvements of phase one, of FDP one, phase one, which is being amended here, and so however it's amended, as long as we get FDP one, phase one done, the development agreement is satisfied. So, you know, we have the choice to pull those things out and defer them, and that would, I think, to me, that would still satisfy the development agreement. But if, if the direction is you want trash cans in now, and we can figure out how to manage it, and that's, we'll, you know, we'll do that. I think, to your point, the landscaping is probably a, a more reasonable deferment than, than the trash cans and things. Especially, it's a good point that people are gonna be parking there, even if there's not a building there right now.
And I leave the landscaping completely up to staff as far as, you know, impact of construction on that, so.
That, that was one of my only hiccups with, with this presentation. I think it's a great idea, but I think those street amenities need to go in, because there is so much traffic coming into the sports stable already. Once that Main Street gets more and more finished and people start parking there, it'll, it'll just be a throughway for people. And if there's no receptacles and amenities there for them, they're just gonna throw it on the ground, and it's gonna blow around. So, the lift station, yeah, that can wait, that's, that's off around the corner, and I agree, it's probably gonna get destroyed in the process of building that building. But I think, I think the, the street amenities should be installed along as, as planned. But otherwise, I think it's beautiful, it's a great idea.
And I, I like everything I've seen, I, the flip-flop of the pavers and the concrete, I, makes great sense, I, I like what I've seen.
It looks great. There was only one other issue that came up for me, and I can't put my finger on it at the moment, but it had something to do with crosswalks and how those were gonna be marked and separated from regular traffic, and particularly in the roundabout and the cross areas there.
Maybe just go to the rendering would probably show it the best.
Yeah, that was a good shot.
I mean, I, the only thing I was gonna clarify was that there is one intersection that staff has requested some changes on, and it's this intersection, you can't, I mean, I guess we can blow it up. Maybe if I can see what I'm blowing out. Usually, there's some sort of zoom-in element, but I don't see it here.
You hold control and do that scroll.
Yeah, uh, so it's squint. But right in here, there's no curb, like, there's no raised curb for the streetlight, this is all flush. And it's the same situation on the northeast corner of this intersection. So, staff is requesting that we either put in just, you know, a small triangular raised curb to protect the streetlight and prevent, because this is a turn, and these are some kind of sharp turns, so people are just gonna roll over that area since it's flush with, or have the potential to. So, protect the pedestrian realm, that's one of the changes that was in staff's recommendation. I don't know if that's what you were referring to or not, but we can also go back to the...
Yeah, and Stephen, I, I think we could do that, it wouldn't have plants in it, because it's not quite big enough, but we could put a curb there.
Right, yeah, it's, it's more to delineate the two crossings.
So, here, so this is sort of typically, pretty close to how it actually looks out there, you can actually walk out and see it. And this is installed right now, and the crosswalk, the, the gray bands, and then the red, the red pavers. And that's pretty typical throughout the whole Main Street, or at least the paver area of the, the field of red, which is for the driving and for the parking. These red pavers are actually turned on a forty-five degree angle, so they're a little bit different, you can kind of tell the differentiation on, on texture between the parking area and the, the driving area. These also have, like Angie was talking about, the stripes are actually gonna be dark bricks set into the actual paving field, so it's, you know, gonna look a lot better than just a white painted stripe. But for the crosswalks, we have a, a really bold stripe of gray, dark gray concrete with two rows of the dark gray iron, it's called iron spot, bricks on either side, and then this lighter tan brick, it's also at a forty-five degree angle. So, when you're looking at it and the sun's bouncing off it, the bricks are actually pretty reflective. So, the change in pattern actually makes quite a big difference, probably more than the color does even. When you're driving down, you see the row of, you know, the row of lines from the straight bricks, and then it gets interrupted by the forty-five degree angle bricks going through the crosswalk. And at the, at the roundabout, it's similar, it's actually the red bricks, I think, at the, at the roundabout for the crosswalks, and the rest of the paving is actually just the gray concrete, and so that does actually have a good contrast, too, because, again, you see the texture of the bricks as opposed to the flatness of the concrete.
So, understanding what Stephen was just saying, in that picture right there, there's no plant or around the light, it's just...
No, this one there actually is, on one of the other blocks, the, this, the corner is smaller, and so there wasn't room for this element. So, it's just a, it's just a flat corner that you could conceivably roll over with a car if you were cutting the corner real close.
Understood, but there's still a light pole there.
There is still a light pole on the other one. And he, Stephen's suggesting that we just put a smaller, just a, a concrete curb around the, the light, to protect the light, protect pedestrians, which I think is fine. It, you know, unfortunately, the, the geometry is such that we don't have as much room as we do here to put six plants around there and make it look really nice. But I, I agree, for safety, it's, it's probably a good idea to put a curb in.
I'm not so concerned about the landscaping, just, yeah, whatever can fit in there.
So, to be clear for myself, that we're not talking about having any painted concrete anywhere there, are we, in any of the crosswalks or anything like that?
Not, not anywhere on Main Street. As you get out on Superior Drive and into the rest of the development, there will be asphalt and concrete that has standard painted lines on it. But Main Street is, is all, I think, do we have, yeah, there, even the, there will be, I think, a, a stripe down the middle of Main Street? Are we down a stripe? No, there's no stripe, okay, never mind.
The first block off of the roundabout has a similar type of finish, or is proposed to have a similar type of finish, is what's shown on the upper left, where it's concrete, and I assume it would be striped, is that correct?
Between the two roundabouts, or...
No, not between the two roundabouts, it's the first block of, so if we go to this block of Main Street, that's a concrete finish, and I assume that would be a painted stripe.
Yeah, that will have traditional stripes. And then it's brick crosswalks everywhere.
Right, all your crosswalks are offset with a different finish.
But from, basically, from here to here, there won't be any, any paint that I can think of on that.
Okay, so area one is what you were talking about earlier, Stephen, is as far as the drive is concrete, the parking is concrete, and then the sidewalks would be concrete?
Currently, or that's what the proposal would be, yeah.
Is what the proposal is, okay.
And if we're not changing, I wouldn't suggest introducing a new element to the pedestrian realm in area one, just to differentiate from this, the parking and the, and the pavement within the street. If, if, you know, we decide on what we're recommending for areas two and three to be this, you know, sandscape finish, you know, with maybe a different scoring or whatever in the pedestrian realm, I would prefer that to carry over to area one as well.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Whether or not we want a different...
I agree, no broom, no broom finish.
Different paving material within the parking area to create a third element or whatever, so that we don't just have, you know, two different types of concrete, then that's a different story, that's a little bit more detail than I got into thus far with possible scenarios for getting us closer to the, meeting the design guidelines.
No, I completely agree with that, it's made for it to be concrete, concrete, and concrete. There's gotta be some differentiation between the sidewalk or pedestrian area and the, the street and the parking.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the change, though, to detach the sidewalk around the roundabout. That seems like, you know, a really good change from a keeping the pedestrians and just a little bit of separation and buffer there. As far as what to do with the broom finish concrete anywhere, you know, I'm not supportive of, I think, reducing the level of quality anywhere, you know, in this FDP related to what we had previously approved. Exactly what that should be, if it should all be the sandscape, I'm curious to know what you all think.
Well, to take the sandscape further out, away from Main Street, out of the secondary streets?
Well, part of this FDP has broom finish concrete where there used to be pavers, like there, and then over on Superior Drive, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. So, generally, I mean, I don't really like the idea of kind of, I, I tend to think the sandscape is, you know, a higher element, if it's what I'm picturing, which I think it is, you know, I'm okay with considering that, like, an elevated material, but the broom finish, not so much, and I don't know that I would support kind of decreasing quality, you know, even over on Superior Drive, I don't know. We didn't spend a lot of time, I think, kind of talking through that, but particularly around the roundabout, I think, more so maybe than Superior Drive.
Well, I think even, I mean, on Superior Drive, that's gonna be, it's gonna be heavily, a lot of foot traffic on Superior Drive because of the sports stable. And that's gonna be an entry point for a lot of people crossing the road, and I don't think we should, yeah, I, I think, in my opinion, anywhere where it was pavers or anything for pedestrian areas, you know, sidewalks, it, it does need to be the, you know, the, the higher finish concrete if, if that's allowable and go in that direction and not the brush concrete.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, too. Especially around the, the town center, throughout all those streets, that it's, it's all uniform, it's all the same level of finish.
I'll, I'll quickly point out, and, you know, again, if that's the direction, that's fine, because it's part of the FDP, and I understand that we're asking for a change. I'll point out that the, the sidewalks here and here, surrounding the other two sides of the block, as well as everywhere down here, are gonna be the standard.
Sure, right.
Right, yeah.
So, it says, so to me, it kind of made sense, you know, the Main Street is this improved, really nice pedestrian area, where most of the people walking are gonna be walking from a parking facility over in this area to the sports stable down Main Street. We want them walking past all the, all the, you know, retail and, and restaurants. And then, you know, this, basically, the rest of the surrounding block would be the, the standard finish.
Well, there along area four, or that, that stretch along in front of, yeah, that stretch right there, what is, what was the original plan for that?
The original was the, well, it's actually concrete unit paper, which we're trying not to use anywhere anymore, because they deteriorate.
And then, what's the sidewalk material in front of the sports stable?
That is the concrete unit paper, and it's already installed.
Right, that's what you were saying, so we do have some of those in place, and then, okay.
And, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, it really, you know, it is a little bit of a different planning area from this area. This is really the sports stable, and it's got a, you know, it's got a little bit of a different aesthetic than we're gonna have for, for the, you know, this is gonna be a little bit elevated, Class A retail type of thing. And the sports stable is, is not quite that level of design, so it's fine to me being different. It does have the same sandstone corners to make this, you know, intersection feel like it is all part of the same design and everything. But it doesn't bother me at all to have the, the clay pavers over here and then the concrete pavers, you know, separated by an asphalt drive over here, because you're, they're far enough apart that you're not gonna see the, the clash. If they were right next to each other, I would hate it.
For me, it feels like the sidewalks in area one, and I do agree with my fellow commissioners here, it would be kind of the gateway to our downtown. And so, it should be some uniformity there, I, I think, as you come into the downtown center.
Where do the sidewalks transition from concrete at the McCaslin Roundabout, because that was under a separate FDP, right? So, where would that transition occur then? So, you also, those are brushed, or the broom finish concrete?
Yeah.
Yes, sidewalks along McCaslin coming into the project.
Yeah, so coming into the project, so essentially, just kind of right off the, right off that area one image, then there also the...
The other roundabout, the Main Street, or the McCaslin Roundabout is sort of like right about here?
Right.
And the sidewalks along McCaslin coming in the project.
Yeah, you can see kind of below on the, yeah, there's not that long of a stretch, but yeah.
So, the sidewalks, the sidewalks coming in down McCaslin part of that are, are in that FDP, they're standard broom finish concrete. Which makes some sense to me, this would have been...
I was gonna say, you could kind of argue then on the west side of the roundabout, but then on the east side of the roundabout, have that switch.
Yeah, maybe, you know, we're already doing all of the sandscape here, so you're right, maybe, maybe this side of the block stays the, the contiguous broom finish coming off of McCaslin.
Yeah.
And as you cross the roundabout, you know, it's, it's really only changing this little stretch here to a sandscape to match what's going on here, and I, I'm completely fine with that, it was actually a good idea.
Seems like...
So, were you suggesting the brushed concrete?
On the west side, sorry, did I say it wrong? So, the west side of the, the west side of the roundabout, that side.
Just leave all that brushed?
Leave all that, because it would blend...
And then, as you cross through the circle.
Yep, and then transition on the, so once you hit the east side, then it switches?
So, th- this is already all the sandscape, the darker here, this is actually a, a concrete, a clay brick.
Okay.
Sort of, it's a little seating area and kind of upgraded materials with the clay brick there. And then, this, this was the broom finish, but I agree with you that since this is sandscape here, that should probably just continue as sandscape to that point.
To that transition.
Yeah.
And then let the, let the, let the west side be the, the standard that goes out to McCaslin, and then everything basically east of, what's this, Marshall or, I don't know, that's the...
That's Gateway.
Gateway, sorry. Everything east of Gateway would be the upgraded sandscape, sandscape.
I never liked the bike rack, by the way, shown in the other P, P E D, so this one, or P D with this, this is better.
Yeah, I like this bike rack.
The next question for me is what kind of timeframe are we looking at in construction and getting this completed and so forth?
Yes, 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 yes. So, we're going to town board on March thirteenth, I believe.
Correct.
Pending, pending approval there, we'll finish the construction documents and get out to bid by April tenth. We need about a month to finish all the construction documents, make sure there's no changes to the FDP before we start that, and then get those out to, out to bid and get them in for permit. And we would have bids due middle of May, and then planning getting a permit about the same time, building permit about the same time, or, or right-of-way permit about, about that same time. So, we would, with a permit middle of May, we would start construction probably June first-ish. And it's probably roughly a four-month construction period, so we're looking at a September completion date if we get the approval on, on March thirteenth. It is a little bit of a tight schedule, I'll be honest, for us, if, if we do, for some reason, get, get pushed. The September date's important, because it's right before October, which is when we have to start, stop all the work on the, I don't wanna be building another horizontal improvement project like the, the round, like the McCaslin Roundabout through next winter. And so, you know, if we can't get started by June, I'd probably just, we'd have to push the whole thing until the next year, because I don't wanna be building this over winter, so. So, it is, you know, it is a little bit tight, but if we, if we get the approval on March thirteenth, I've got no, no concern about getting it done before end of October. And it's gonna feel really, I mean, I, I can't wait, you're gonna have trees in, you're gonna have lights in, you're gonna have pedestrian areas, it's finally gonna feel like an actual Main Street, it's gonna be open to traffic. It's gonna, you know, help us on the development side, being able to sell, like, the home lots and sell homes to, to home buyers. So, you know, it's gonna start feeling a lot different once we get this, this scope done.
So, one other thing, and maybe this is for you, Stephen, why, you, you mentioned lighting in and having the trees in and all of that. Why isn't lighting a part of this amendment?
That's a great question. We had to approve administratively a lighting change, I mean, it's not significant to what was proposed before, but they did update their light fixture, which was more, I mean, just as this application was fairly involved for really being paving and landscaping, the light amendment was a pretty involved application as well in terms of just changing out a fixture. But the fixture kind of comparable to the changes to the, you know, the bike parking and all that stuff, is just a much sleeker, more modern-looking fixture, and it actually distinguishes the town center a lot more than kind of the acorn-shaped fixture that was previously proposed, which we see in different, it's kind of like a bluish-green Pantina throughout the rest of town, this is gonna be black, and the, the new fixture is much, I don't know, it's just more angular, and it, it has an element that it's, you know, it's cast down, so it meets all the requirements, but it has like a wick element that looks like it's not. Like, it makes the, the middle, and it has a, it's a really neat kind of downtown feature. So, we were excited to approve that change, but with any change in light, changes like the light locations and the, the foot count readings and all that type of stuff. So, these two have been coordinated, but to get to your point and as to why we didn't review that collectively, is those fixtures had to be ordered in order to be able to get installed at a certain time. So, we, we did that review over the last couple of months and got that completed as an administrative change, which we can do as long as it's not too, too large of a change. This is much more, and this is something that I think at the time of the PD, everyone was expecting, the above-grade changes, particularly the elements that allow for a curb to be removed, to come back to the board and to the planning commission, so you guys can see what that looks like. And it's expanded, obviously, these guys always work kind of tirelessly, tirelessly at figuring out what a better design might be or what a, you know, so. So it always expands, gives me a little bit more work, but it usually ends up as a better design too, so.
To, to illustrate the point, the, the lighting amendment was approved a couple of weeks ago, a month ago.
Yeah.
I think we're, we've already ordered, or we're just about to order the light fixtures, and we'll have them on site by September, by the time we finish the rest of this design. Which is why we wanna get that approved earlier, so we can actually get the lights installed this year.
So I think you also brought up another good point with, you know, planting the trees along Main Street. What are the setbacks from, or the distances from the trees to where construction will be done for the buildings that will line Main Street? And kind of along the same lines as we're talking about, you know, construction going on and damaging the trees.
I don't, I mean, the, the benefit, I guess, I'll take a crack at responding to that first, but Bill and I have had this discussion as well, is that, you know, nothing north or south of Main Street has been built yet. So the access, the construction access to those areas can come in from the other sides. But your setback is really like the intent of downtown, you know, other than where the plaza area is gonna be within Area Three is to have a, a fairly minimal setback. You're gonna have buildings built, and it's ten feet of separation essentially between the landscape beds that are proposed along each side of the street. And so you get a ten-foot wide, you know, pedestrian realm, realm walkway, and it could be built all the way up to that. If not, it'll be built within a few feet of that, and there's, you know, provisions within the design guidelines to allow for kinda courtyards and like these, you know, breaks and that type of, even or, you know, consistent facade, but part of creating the downtown is also creating that consistent facade. So those breaks will be kind of the exception to the rule, so.
Yeah, and Stephen hit the nail on the head, there, there is a ten-foot separation between the back of curb of that tree planter and the back of sidewalk where the private property starts. On that private property, typically you're gonna see roughly a two to three foot setback, just so you can get your footings in and everything behind the property line and, and, you know, have a little forested left over there. So ultimately, you'll probably have ten to thirteen feet between the planter curb and the face of the building. It's gonna be built, just like a downtown Denver building is built. This is actually easier, because to Stephen's point, we can access it from the back, which is all dirt still. And so it'll be scaffolded, and the sidewalk will be kept open to the public, and we'll be building.
I think, I think it's more important to get the trees in now and let them start their growth cycle. It's just that when the construction comes, it needs to be just made abundantly clear to the contractors that, you know, at all.
Yeah, and they'll be responsible for replacing anything that gets damaged and all that typical, you know, typical thing.
Do you envision requiring adjacent development to also use that sand scape concrete, you know, up to and kind of in courtyards and things like that? Or how do you envision that blending?
I hadn't actually thought about that yet. If we do it, I certainly would, if we build it, and if we sell it to another developer, you know, we, we, we should consider that, yeah.
It's something we'll have to consider through the final development plan, but it's, it's an element paving to, you know, keep in the back of your mind, so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle of all the other details.
So Stephen, I, I'm curious to get your feedback. You sort of alluded to, it looks, you have more to go on right now, but, but can you share with me what you're thinking?
My thinking on the, the paving in particular?
Just the entire.
Oh, I mean, I.
All the changes.
The, I think the changes overall are great. I mean, I think that, you know, for the most part, we're providing additional landscaping areas, which is gonna create a richer environment for the pedestrian. And that many of these changes are all designed with kind of that pedestrian, you know, that's the focus, not the vehicle, which is what it should be in a downtown environment. So, I mean, I'm supportive of, of the changes, and as far as the paving goes, kinda like I said earlier, it's just my responsibility to make sure we're not, you know, approving a lesser standard than either the bar we set through FDP One or the conditions and standards we set through the design guidelines. And I think that having, you know, hopefully an actual sample, but even the photos that you provided tonight are better than what we had as far as the application materials go. So I think that we can probably get there, either with additional scoring or just clarification on what that material looks like, is finding it to be comparable to paving Type C. I do think that, you know, you're gonna draw the line somewhere as to where it merges with, you know, the traditional sidewalk that's gonna be included closer to McCaslin. But I, I think anywhere and everywhere we can get a higher-end concrete within the downtown area, we should probably get it, or higher-end paving in general, if it's not concrete, because it does set a different tone and kind of expectation for the surrounding development and so. Oh.
One last thing. On the later pages of this amendment, there is a reference to planting materials that you'll be using. And what, what we found is that there are some plants that aren't on our approved design guideline plan. And will those, will you be able to replace those pretty easily or switch those out with something that is on the design guideline?
There is only one that staff required a replacement for, and I'll let Angie respond to whether or not she feels like she can replace it with something. But it was the elm, and it's just the fact that the town hasn't had good luck with elms in the past, so, and it's not on the design guide list, so when we haven't had luck with something, and it's not on the list, we can have a higher standard for what gets approved in there, so.
And I see four.
Yeah, I thought there were four.
But there are different elements as far as like planting materials, but those were considered like-for-like kind of replacements and actually provide a little bit more diversity to the, and that's part of the intent too. So we don't, we don't have any issue with certain exceptions, as long as we haven't had bad experiences with them like we have with the elm. So the other, I don't have them memorized, but there are three, I think they were either shrubs or, are they shrubs? Angie might be able to respond to this better, but there are three others mentioned, but they, we didn't find any issue with those substitutions.
So I think there was maybe some confusion when the design guidelines were written. I don't think we ever saw that as an exhaustive list, it was more a representative list. And then, we use the same, in this application, we use the same plant list that was approved in, in the first 2013 FDP. So no plans from that FDP have changed to this FDP, and we're happy to replace the, um, the only reason we kept it was because it was in the approved FDP, and we were trying to at least, you know, keep some similarities between the two, but we are, we're very happy to replace it.
So you simply brought it forward from a previous.
We did.
From the FDP.
And the design guidelines are long, they're a hundred and forty pages, so when they were written, I think, you know, we didn't put the whole, you know, nursery plant list in there, but there's, and then a lot of our challenges around the roundabout, we have to stay below a height level. And so that's one of our biggest challenges with the shrubs.
So just to clarify, there's a frontier elm, flower carpet red rose, a creeping three-leaf sumac, and a blue false indigo. Those are the four materials or four species that are proposed that weren't on the list, and the frontier elm is the only one that we're not allowing.
Anything else?
I don't have any more questions, but I wanna, I don't know if we wanna keep the public hearing open, so that we can kinda confer with staff and the attorney on what to do with Condition B. And then maybe what we wanna do related to the paving material for the sidewalk on Superior Drive. So I don't know if we'll need to ask the attorney or if, if it's okay to close the public hearing and still be able to.
I'm not the public. It's okay to close the public hearing, you can confer with me anytime.
Okay. Oh, okay, great.
Well, thank you very much for coming down, and you also, Steve, so, for all your work. We're gonna adjourn this open hearing now.
Discussion? Have we had discussion?
Pardon me?
Discussion, or have we had discussion?
Anything do we wanna discuss?
I think, I think my original question about, you know, replacing the bicycle lane and everything is, you know, is well explained, and especially if, if the speeds are expected to be in that ten to fifteen mile range, I think it does create a, and, you know, a safe environment for bikes. I mean, you can never really take away all of the elements of danger when, when you include bikes and cars, but I think the, the way that it was designed and explained, I think I'm fine with that.
Yeah, how, how tight the, the streets are down there and have bikes in there with cars, everything's just gonna slow down. Then the, the rumbling of the pavers, that, that always gets everyone's attention, it just naturally slows down.
Maybe same ten to fifteen miles an hour, I think, right?
And I suspect your bikes will probably hit the sidewalks anyway, so.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, but I would envision those who are kind of traveling somewhere else are not gonna probably ride their bikes down Main Street, my guess would be.
Probably, yeah, maybe not if you're going to sports table.
Yeah, but, you know, and then if you are kind of accessing one of the businesses on Main, at that point, you're right, you're probably getting off your bike and walking in, looking for a place to park.
Or coming into back road.
Yeah, exactly, so I think it, I think.
And that may be something we consider later, that we really think about better through lanes on the other roads, so that if you are actually commuting in, you're not even tempted to come through Main Street.
So how do you guys feel about the sidewalk material on Superior Drive?
Again?
Sorry, the sidewalk material on Superior Drive.
Would convert.
To the sand scape or to the broom finish?
To the sand scape. Yeah. I'd like to have the highest quality that we can, so the, hate to use this pun, but I'll use it anyway, it's gonna be a superior result. And I, I like it as well, I like the, the contrast that it provides to all the pavers and all the bricks. So I think they've, they've done a really good job with that, that piece of it. I, I'm also a little more clear about the direction we're going now, so that was good too, because earlier I thought that we were looking at this brushed concrete all along the sidewalks, downtown Main Street, and all throughout the project, and I'm, I'm very happy that that, that's not the case.
And I, you know, I think there's, there's a lot that can be done with the, the sandstone or the concrete, you know, cutting it in smaller, you know, larger sections and everything to really differentiate and kind of break it up, it's not that monotonous, you know, every six feet there's an expansion joint or eight or whatever. You kind of really, you can create different patterns that make it look less and less like concrete, and I think that's probably gonna be the most important. If we, you know, if we went down that road of, of using that material, making it different in every, you know, in any way we can, just to kind of break it up, I think that's the, would be the best use of it, so.
Sounds like now there's some alternatives, whereas previously it didn't seem like there were many alternatives, this is what we were gonna do, and that didn't, that didn't feel very good at all, or didn't sit very well with me, so it's, it's good to have some options there.
I think it, was it Area Two that has the, the paver inserts on the concrete, is that, was that in Area Two? Or the, the little design element that was.
The street name?
No.
No.
I don't know. No, just on the, just go back to the, just the standard plan, yeah, one that shows just Area Two, there you go.
There you go.
Maybe not. Oh, Area One, sorry.
At every corner, they have some quoted contrast, but they're.
But I thought it was more mid-block, that's what I was looking for, something that was like a third of the way down. Okay, yeah, it's hard to see on there, okay. You know, and if there were, if there's, you know. Oh, no, last one showed it, there you go, I think it's. Yeah, I think anywhere you can introduce even in adding the pavers to, to break it up. Yeah, right there, that's it, yeah.
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 So the, the look is a bit more contemporary.
I think it's in line more with some of the other applications that we've approved, when you look at Element Hotel and, some of those buildings are definitely leaning on, you know, and I understand Element's not kind of in the core, but it seems like the character of the buildings that these guys are bringing in. Yeah, a little more in the contemporary realm of that.
The proposed housing, that's.
Yeah.
Wonderlooms.
Yeah, contemporary.
Does anybody else care about the precast concrete tops? Are you guys gonna change that, or do we need to make a condition, or does anybody else care, I don't know?
Maybe we should ask them to bring a sample of that in as well.
No, so when you said that, I was like, the only, the only thing about the precast concrete is if, I mean, you could almost tie it into you, using the same, the same, you know, the, a higher grade finish.
Yeah.
You know, and, and going that way, and, but you're right, if it chips, then you're gonna see the inside of the concrete.
Especially if you've got a colored concrete, then the patch doesn't matter, I mean, you can, it, it might be fine, but I'd rather just not go there.
We can say all we want, that there will be no skateboarders in this area, but sooner or later, they're gonna sneak in and chip a patch.
Well, I mean, even on install, you know, I mean, you know, again, they can get chipped on install and they only have to come back in and patch it. You don't necessarily have to come back in and replace the whole piece, or, you know, a year later something gets, I don't know, I'd rather just have it, I'd even be okay with, sorry, I'm getting into the weeds a little bit, cast stone rather than precast concrete, so you've got the integral, you know, material rather than the, so. But I'd rather see like a natural stone or even the wood plank, I thought that was kind of a neat look.
Had like a black finish to the top, I don't know what that.
That's the precast one, or what, in one of their photos, they had like, it was like a, like a one by four, like wood plank on top of the cast concrete. I thought that was a neat look. It's just one of my pet peeves.
So do we need to make that a condition, or can it just be? And if, and if so, I mean, you don't wanna restrict it to something specific, you wanna, you wanna prevent, you, you wanna not have a concrete cap, right?
I would encourage it to be more of a natural material, you know, whether that's wood or natural stone.
It's up to you, as far as, if you want a condition, we're, we can certainly add a condition. If you feel like it's, you know, something a little less than a condition, we can, you know, request that the applicant explore it and provide some alternatives for the board to consider. However you wanna do it, it's totally up to you.
These, these are on top of the seat walls you're talking about?
Yeah. I guess, you know, I know the applicant looks like they're okay with swapping it out. I don't think you guys really care one way or the other on that material, I don't know, I don't wanna make it more onerous than it needs to be.
No, but I hear you, if it's, if it's getting chipped, and you're right, I mean, skateboarders will be there.
Yeah.
At some point.
Just five years down the road, you look at a lot of developments where they've used that, you know, Northfield and places, and sometimes it's fine and sometimes it not, and I'd rather it just be a little more guaranteed.
So we don't, I mean, we don't need to make it a condition, but we could ask that they bring, what is your other option, bring?
You could do either one, you could just have them explore alternatives and have some alternatives present to the Town Board, you know, and I can obviously capture your concerns about the maintenance, I think it's a good point.
Or maybe we just do a condition that, yeah, that precast concrete should not be used, you know, additional materials brought forth for the board's consideration.
Yeah.
Something like that. What are, Stephen, what are your thoughts related to Condition B?
As far as changing it?
Yeah, have we now kind of made a determination that the sand scape is a Type C paving?
I almost think it's kind of similar to the similar condition that you just mentioned for the, is that they, you know, that we're not okay with Type D being, you know, proposed, and they need to demonstrate that they're meeting the intent of Type C. And you can clarify, you can go on to clarify, you don't necessarily think it needs to be stained, you know, or you agree that there's concerns about maintenance, you know, with, with staining or coloring the concrete, but, you know, based on the photos that we've seen, it, I think there's hope that that might be made, but I also would think that we would rather see an actual physical sample before. So maybe we just condition that they bring that physical sample to the board, I mean, you can do anything, but.
No, I think that sounds reasonable.
What you feel like, uh.
Samples be brought before the board. Samples be brought before the board for their consideration, but.
Is that what, March 13th meeting?
Yeah. And then maybe you can just, in the staff report, express.
The concerns that we raised, yeah. What are your, so are we, I mean, I guess the other question and clarification as far as paving, which has been the kind of the crux of our discussion, is, are we all in agreement? I know that was discussed, that we kind of split it, you know, half and half around the roundabout. And then, I'm not quite sure, I think a few of you have commented that the high-end finish throughout Superior Drive is also the direction that we're providing.
That's correct.
So I think that condition, yeah, is gonna be long. But, uh, but I, I think we want to address it all.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. I think that's, that's what, yeah. Superior Drive, yes. East of the roundabout, yes.
You had to redraft this resolution anyway, right?
Very minorly, up until this point.
True. True.
Right, so what, what we'll need is a, we'll need a motion that approves the resolution as amended, and then we need to go back through the amendments, if you can.
So do you draft those amendments, like, tonight, so then they get read in, or how do you?
They, they'll be read in, they'll be read in tonight, and then memorialized in a new version of the resolution that you're now approving passage of as amended.
Are you ready for that?
No, I'm fine with that. Must say, when I came in earlier, I was skeptical, very skeptical, and didn't think that, you know, I would be willing to move forward on this tonight, personally. However, I think that some of the, my concerns, some of the questions have been answered. I'm also one to acknowledge that I understand that there are some time constraints here, and that we probably need to get moving on this, so that we don't slow down the process of getting this work completed before, um, winter. So I just wanted to point that out as, as well.
So do we need to work on this condition before we?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah.
Just try to figure out what the wording might sound like before we try to read something in.
And I can clean it up.
The main thing is convey the substantive requirements. Doesn't have to sound pretty.
Get the elements down. We wanted a sample.
Well, the main part is, uh, using an upgraded concrete material on the sidewalk along Main Street and out on Superior Drive, correct?
Yeah, so something like, you know, prior to approval by the town board, the applicant should demonstrate that the sand scape concrete, you know, is equivalent to a paving level whatever or better.
Right.
And provide material board.
So I have something to the effect of, and I'm not quite done, so hopefully I don't model this too bad. Applicant shall provide physical sample of sand scape concrete finish for confirmation that it meets the intent of paving type C or better. And if approved, apply this finish to the areas of Main Street between, or east of the Gateway Roundabout, all the way to Superior Drive, and on the western portion of Superior Drive, it's unfinished. Something to that effect.
Yep.
Yes.
And do we have to include the breakup? There's some areas, right, where we're putting pavers. Is that, or is that already in the?
I mean, I guess that's another part we discussed, is whether or not you want those paver elements expanded as well, or do you think that the, the sand scape concrete finish is sufficient? So that's another, there's a lot of nuances to this. But I think we should also clarify that you guys have agreed that the broom finish is acceptable west of Gateway to tie into the sidewalk that's planned along McCaslin. Does anyone have any thoughts on, you know, whether or not it's fine as designed?
I think it needs to be explored and presented to the board. Maybe two, two options, adding those additional paved stone elements into, you know, like you just had up there, that extending from the corner, I guess extending from any corners, intersection corners. And I don't know if we can, oh, you have them extended to the edge of the planters, right?
Correct, yeah. I can just present that as another option to the board and keep that in my staff recommendation, if that's, you know.
But I think at the same time, for, you know, for time's sake, that the applicant, do they look at, you know, options in that, in that realm, too. So if the board does agree, they already have their, you know.
They have something to actual C, yeah, gotcha.
Is this what you're looking at? And then that way, it doesn't hold up the, the process.
And then, yeah, something to the effect, applicant shall replace, you know, precast concrete caps with another more natural material to be presented to the down board, or, not that we need to decide that here tonight.
Probably.
Do we want to make a recommendation of exactly what material we'd want?
Or, well, at least put in the reason why, so we don't, I mean.
Sure. Due to concerns over durability.
Durability.
And then we should also allow the applicant to bring in alternatives, if that's part of it, to do that, or, or options.
I mean, we could say such as a natural stone, or something to that effect.
Okay.
What's that? Say wood.
Or wood.
Wood, natural stone or wood.
Yeah. Likes wood.
Apparently that, yeah.
Guessing it's a little cheaper. Easily replaced.
Just procedurally, we're gonna entertain the motion at some point in time in the near future, which basically is gonna amend, is going to approve the resolution as stated with changes in section B as discussed. And then that's gonna be redrafted, for want of a better word.
Correct.
And I'm supposed to come by, I guess, tomorrow or something for signature?
Correct.
Is that how the motion should be organized, basically?
I'd rather it not specify that the changes be limited to part B, because it might make sense to pull out some of those as their own conditions.
Okay, I understand.
But, uh, approval as, as amended.
All right.
So paving changes, and then if you want to add the seat wall.
Yeah, okay.
Finish, that's a, so.
That'll be as.
That'll be a different condition as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think another condition will be the installation of the trash cans and recycling bins along Main Street.
Well, that's already part.
It's, it's in there.
So that's default, right? It's default to include them. It would be change.
That's not.
It's covered, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It is covered?
And then the landscaping, can we handle that? And, I mean, it's?
I just defer to staff on that, as far as, you mean, next to the?
Next to the, yeah.
Do you have thoughts on, you know, I mean, to include in my summary for the board?
I mean, I think in general, we agree it makes sense to.
Yes.
To allow them to defer that to some reasonable.
Well, when the, when the planting goes in for the medical building, it'll be done at that time.
Yeah. Like you referenced, something along the line of six months post.
Yeah, there probably needs to be a timeframe in there, too. I mean, if something happens with the medical building, or, you know, God forbid, you know.
Sure, yeah. Either prior, either prior to CO for the medical building, or.
Or within six months of CO.
I would say CO for the medical building, or within, but the risk is if they don't do the medical building, then they deferred, and then there's no trigger.
Right.
Somebody want to take a back at the motion?
On that, do you actually want to say something specifically, or do you just want me to kind of clarify in my summary of your discussion?
Yeah, we leave it out, we leave it out of our recommendation.
I know. I'm just trying to think of what other trigger there could be. If we, if, if they don't do the medical office building, then there's no need to defer, but.
Well, and, and if, you know, town board's not supportive of it, there's no use in us going through the motion of trying to figure out what the trigger is, you know. So, I mean, I think it's kind of a town board item, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I think that's all we had.
Yeah, I think so. Somebody wish to make a motion?
So I will make a motion to approve Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number PC dash?
Two.
Two, series 2017. A resolution of the planning commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of an amendment to Superior Town Center Final Development Plan One, sorry, Final Development One, Phase One for paving and landscaping as amended. Is that all we need to say? As amended.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rissy. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Malia, all in favor? unanimous? Seven, zero. Thank you all? I was expecting a lot more complexity when my way over here after reading it a few times.
Really? It was a long report. It was good.
No, it was, it was very thorough. It was extremely thorough report.
Why would we, why would we make this change?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Were you adjourned?
Are we adjourned?
Yeah, we're not.
Or do we need to adjourn?
Wait, wait, wait. Do you have any staff announcements?
We're not, we're not done yet.
Yes. Thank you. Any other matters, staff or otherwise?
The only reminder, I guess, more than an announcement, is that you guys have your dinner with the town board on the 13th, so.
March 13th.
But no meeting the first time in March?
No meeting as of now, and I don't imagine it'll happen. And then, I guess, just, you know, the vacation request that you guys considered earlier this month is going to the town board meeting next week on Monday. So that's all I can think of off the top of my head.
We, I mean, in our last discussion, too, it was, we talked about coming forward with ideas of things that we want to work on in our work plan.
Right.
I'm not sure how that gets on the agenda, and we actually had the discussion about those items.
We just bring them up.
Right, so I think that the, I mean, if you are interested in scheduling a meeting in the first part of March, to just have a work session, we could do that.
Yeah, I think that's what we talked about doing. Let's be, let's be consistent with our meetings. If we don't have an item, that's an opportunity for us to work on some of these other items.
Right, yep.
And I, I request that we come forward, we come into that meeting prepared to talk about, you know, some of our interests.
Yeah, so we should have at least a week before this dinner meeting, or two weeks before, if it's a case.
So you want to have that meeting in order to have a work session in preparation? I guess I wasn't sure or clear as to whether or not you wanted to wait and have the.
We can kick it around and get a feel for what we want to bring out.
Right, however you want to do it, it's fine. It's your, it's your meeting.
I mean, we all have our ideas of things that we want to work on.
We'll air out what we want to, think we need to do and that kind of stuff, so that when we go to the dinner meeting, we're sort of unified and.
Yeah, okay.
Just do work session.
So that's March 13th?
In the case?
March 7th.
We're adjourned.
March 7th. We'll need a notice if, if.